...the attention of my neighbors and myself with the Goldenberg Group of Montgomery County, and developer Tim Harrison are seeking a tax increment financing scheme, commonly known as a TIF, to assist in the development of a retail shopping complex located along Crox Road between the Route 22 bypass and Hamilton Boulevard in Lower McCounche Township. TIFs involve the use of collected real estate taxes to pay off the debt of corporate investors instead of being used to operate, maintain, and improve the general welfare of the taxing district from which these revenues are intended. Proposed anchor stores for this project are Shop Right, Lowe's, Target, and Costco. I live less than a half a mile from this proposed development, and I can tell you that I already have access to no less than four 24-hour grocery stores and four big-box retailers, including a Super Walmart, within a five-minute drive of my house. Home Depot started and abandoned the development of a store just south of this location on Hamilton Boulevard a few years ago, which has left taxpayers with an empty, unused space and an unwanted and annoying stockpile in Shepherd Lane. Given the fact that the East Penn School District, by your own admission during the last budget debate, is facing a never-ending increase in cost to taxpayers to support and maintain wealthy union pension benefits to our union employees, I cannot see how we can possibly afford to use our precious tax dollars to fund the projects of wealthy out-of-town investors. There is no shortage of potential investors wanting to do business in our school district. As a real estate investor myself, I know that any investment project should have the ability to stand on its own financial merit. In other words, if it doesn't make dollars, it doesn't make sense. I am not opposed to the developers moving forward with their project. It's a free country, and I am a firm believer in property rights. I am opposed to the use of tax revenues to pay for it. At the very least, I would like to see the taxpayers share in future profits over and above collected tax revenues, if the hard-working taxpayers of our area are forced to share the risk. Additionally, on a separate note, I would like to thank a teacher at Willa Lane School. Her name is Ms. Jen Diskin. Last spring, she operated a program called Kids in Motion, where the kids, for eight to 10 weeks, actually met a couple times a week. I was a volunteer in that program, and I sincerely enjoyed it. And that culminated in the efforts of the first annual Willa Lane Element Route 5 KET. So with that being said, I would like to present Dr. Seidenberger with one of our race t-shirts, which I got sponsors to pay for medals and t-shirts for the kids. So, Dr. Seidenberger, thank you very much. We have a great meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Excellent. The other request to address the board I have is Ms. Karen Heckman of Alberta speaking of high school and middle school orientation.
Thank you for letting me address you tonight. I have a request. As a working mother, I have a daughter that's a freshman in high school and a son in eighth grade at our house. And I request that you consider when you're working on orientations, because I believe right now in the district, there is a lot more working people, parents, than say at home and jobs. And as far as the orientation in both middle school and the high school, it's in the morning from like eight in the morning, nine in the morning until 11 or 10 in the morning, right in the middle of workout. And then the high school also offers students a chance to go into the classrooms and around the halls and find their lockers from eight in the morning till 12 or 1 o'clock. It's the closest I've ever outside of work. And there's no chance for a working parent to do that. They can't get off, especially when we get three days' notice when the orientation is. And the person who's accused was when we were trying to get out the schedule. And we can't change because this is what we've always done. Well, as a taxpayer, you have to work to pay your taxes. What I think you need to consider is working parents.
Thank you, Ms. Heckman. I have no other requests to address the board. We'll all move on to the approval of minutes. Can I have a motion for that, please? Are there any comments, corrections, or additions to the minutes? On appearing, all those in favor of approving the minutes as is, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the minutes are approved as is. At this point in the agenda, we have a presentation by Mr. Harrison and members of the Goldenberg Group on the subject of the TIF. Welcome, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you very much, Dr. Seidenberger. My name is Tim Harrison. Because I have to admit, I'm a developer from Staten Island, New York, although in defense, I will say both of my children were in Carisburg Hospital. And we lived in, my wife and I lived in Carisburg for 10 years until my wife was transferred to Staten Island and I was transferred to. I want to introduce to you some people who were with me tonight. Jeremy Vogel will be sharing the presentation from the Goldenberg Group Development Pennsylvania. Kevin Trapper in the second row, also from the Goldenberg Group. Amy Coughlin in the second row from Delta Development of Carisburg, Pennsylvania. And Joel Bogdan from Mullin and Monarch Associates in Huntington Valley, Pennsylvania. I wanted to start with an update on the Hamilton Crossings Project. The Hamilton Crossings Project is a large retail project. I actually began work on the project in 2008, filed a preliminary plan in the Target and Lowe's in early 2009. Then, as all of us remember only too well, the economy, the digital recession, Lowe's terminated its new store development program, and the project was severely tempered. I continued working on it with Lower McCounche Township, attempting to craft a project that would be acceptable to the township and, at the same time, financially viable. And in order to make the project work, the bottom line was it needed to be much larger and more densely developed than township organs allowed. Eventually, we came up with a plan with something like this. This is approximately 580,000 square feet, long 62 acres. The anchor tenants are Costco, Target, Shop Right. There are various junior anchors, restaurants, and other small retailers that are part of the project. In February 2011, Lower McCounche Township granted a package of 28 zoning variances that were needed to accommodate a project of this kind of density. And actually, since that time, we've had to make substantial provisions to the plan to accommodate Costco, and more important, to accommodate some very severe geotechnical issues that we uncovered on the site. The project involves total investment of over $120 billion. It will employ more than 1,000 people. It will involve more than 400 construction jobs. Our projections are that the project will generate real estate taxes for the school district somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.2 to $1.4 million per year, although I must caution that those are our projections. Ultimately, the projections will be done by, not by us, but by a TIF committee in consultation with the county assessor. However, we do believe our projections are conservative and make sense. The project is a higher-end shopping center. It involves a degree of architecture, amenities, landscaping, that are much more similar to the promenade shops in Salford Valley than to any shopping centers in Lower McCounche Township. The project also involves some rather significant road improvements. The most important of which is the construction of a service road along the Route 22 bypass from approximately this location west of Crox Road to the intersection of Crox Road, and then past the intersection of Crox Road, maybe 2,000 linear feet in total. In effect, what this does is provide direct access to the project from eastbound traffic on the bypass, and also, in effect, add the third rule length of the bypass thereby increasing the taxes. The project also involves a regional shoremark retention facility that will handle flooding problems that occurred today from a drainage area of over 400 acres. What we discovered in extensive geotechnical studies that my partners, the Goldenberg Group commissioned and Costco commissioned earlier this year is very, very severe problems that although you wouldn't know if walking by this site really make it an industrial ground field. This site began before the Civil War, was the site of open pit iron line. It's called Joseph Baskin's Line. And that line operated on and off until the 1940s, a period of more than 70 years. There was also located on the site a facility which used a water source that was adjacent to the site to separate the iron ore, which was mined on the site, from the sediment which was embedded. And that sediment, once it was washed away from the iron ore, was just used to fill in mine holes. It wasn't compatible and obviously not regulated. Our problem is we now have over 185,000 cubic yards of that sediment on the site, located And to make that 185,000 cubic yards a little bit more comprehensible, that's 333,000 tons of material, or to put it another way, 50,000 dump truck loads. Material has no structural strength whatsoever. It's in a highly saturated state. It has the consistency of pancake batter, so that any weight that's put on the material causes it to expand horizontally, anyway. And what our geotechnical reports, just to give you some idea of the scope of it in this red weighty volume, what our geotechnical reports have all recommended is that buildings be moved out of mine wash, the mine wash be extracted, all 50,000 dump truck loads, 333,000 tons, extracted from the ground, mixed with cement or a stone, maybe 50/50, put back in the ground in one-foot lifts once it's dried out and packed. And we've got depths of this stuff that exceed 24 feet. There was no provision in the pro forma where this kind of extraordinary remediation caused it. And frankly, this project is not viable. Actually, this site, this six-gameer site, is now in a clean and green zone. It generates real estate taxes of about $7,000 a year. And our belief, informed by these geotechnical reports, is that the site will forever remain in an undeveloped state without this type of remediation. Absolutely nothing of any weight has been built on this site. There's another problem that we have that's unique to this site, which is there is massive deposits of limestone, which geotechnical engineers call karst, K-A-R-S-T, lyne's limestone, that are underlaid at the site. And 80 years of open pit mining, repeated explosions and disturbance involved, 80 years of open pit mining, has fractured 60 acres of karst to the point where it's impossible to build on it even once the mine wash is remediated. And to make matters even more difficult, the mine wash itself, which is so saturated, has been dripping water slowly and incessantly onto the limestone for eight years. When water interacts with limestone, it dissolves it. So we have a lattice of rock underneath the mine wash that won't support buildings here. Are there geotechnical solutions to this? Yes. I read in the Morning Call, an article a couple weeks ago about similar problems associated with the Hocky, or downtown, which had a similar problem. They're using 1,600 micropods to support that, at least according to the Morning Call, to support that structure. That's one remediation technique that's been recommended here. There are others as well, and we're sorting through that. But suffice it to say, for present purposes, it's extraordinarily costly, and the project simply cannot be developed without this remediation, whether it's our project or any other project. In addition, the transportation network that we're putting in here to support the project is extremely costly. It will benefit the project, but it will also benefit the community as well because of the additional capacity that we're adding to the program. Now, I'm going to yield my time to Jeremy Vogel, who's a much more particular, talented person than I am, to go through the TIF process that we'd like him to consider. Thank you.
As Tim outlined, I guess, good evening, I'm Jeremy Vogel, Goldenberg Group. As Tim outlined, we basically have a kind of simple situation. A project that we think has a lot of merit, it is something that we do in terms of our real estate focus and building commercial shopping centers, and try to do in-house with our own finances when possible. This particular site presents the problems that Tim outlined and creates a solution in terms of the types of funding that we could identify to try to bridge a financial gap that exists here. The tax increment financing structure is something that is often misunderstood. It's not something that is applicable in all circumstances, and we're here tonight just to be informative and ask the board to consider the concept. We have some information to share with you about what it is, and hope that we can come back again and talk about it in more detail. But in general, when we look at a tax increment financing, the main test is actually called a but-for test. And you are supposed to look at a piece of property and identify whether you think it can develop on its own, or will it only develop but for some financing. This property has been in an extremely developed township for a long time. It's in the center of its commercial core. It's currently by the archdiocese of Hamilton, and as Tim indicated, it only throws off about $7,000 in taxes a year. Based on the physical limitations that we've identified, it's our position that reason hasn't been developed is because of these issues. People have slowly invested this property over the years for different uses and have slowly come to conclusions, probably not after doing as much of an expensive investigation as we have, but they clearly understood that there's a major barrier to developing this property physically, and it's prevented anything and any substance from happening here. And but for us coming up with some solutions on how to bridge this gap, this project will continue through all $7,000 a year. And I think that it's important for the public to understand that because, as the public will say, and that was put down explicitly by the gentleman to begin with, with this beginning discussion about the project, if the project would easily happen otherwise, sometimes it's not appropriate to have the public involved in the financing of a project. This is a case where we feel otherwise, and we think it's extremely appropriate. We think that the taxes that will be used if the groups that they involve agree only come from the project and from no other source. They only come from the real estate tax that we generate with the project that we create. So the increment in TIF reference, whatever the actual assessment is, is only a portion of those new taxes that would be used for the project. And the township, the town school, and the county, in this case, the township doesn't have local tax, so the school and the county would each have a significant increase in their share of the taxes from the project than they would otherwise. So there is a win-win for everyone to achieve here if the project is able to move forward. And if not, obviously, what would happen is our project would not be able to move forward, and the tenants that are looking to go here would just go elsewhere. We believe at this point, the tenants that we're talking to would move far afield, and obviously, everybody locally would suffer that loss, to the extent that that was important to them. There's a number of sources that we're trying to receive these monies from. We're not relying locally on the school district. We have made a number of applications for funding from the state. We are working with the others, office for some sources for some of the road improvements and some of the other issues that we have on the project. And we are looking only to ask the county and the township and the schools to work with us to bridge whatever gap is left at the end of that effort. It's hard to know exactly what the gap will be. We think we've started to define that, but the purpose of our step on the TIF is to ask for a committee, that's the first step in the process. And if the school would be so willing, a board would be established, a TIF committee, which would involve folks from all those different groups, and also including Lehigh County Industrial Development Authority, and we would work together to try to identify exactly what the gap is, what a reasonable projection of the revenue from the project would be, how bond could be floated by the Industrial Development Authority to help finance some of the construction costs, and the exact details of how that works out. The TIF committee's job is to work through that process and come up with a recommendation. They then come back to all the boards with that recommendation so that the folks on the boards can have a chance to understand exactly what they're looking at and decide whether they think is appropriate. So really, what we're asking for is for this board just to be aware that the process is something we'd like them to consider. We'd like you to have some information that I want to talk about, and then we'll come back again. One of the handouts we have for you is an outline prepared by the solicitor of the LCIDA, John Lucius. It's kind of a how-to for TIFs, and it's something that he drafted that we found is very helpful in trying to understand a TIF. And again, I don't believe this school district has been involved with a TIF, so please don't take this as condescending discussion. It's really just trying to give information for something that, if you haven't been involved in, can be quite confusing. We've also brought with us an outline of some of the TIFs that have been put in place inside Kamala. It is a vehicle that's been involved since the 70s. It's something that is used routinely throughout the country. Pennsylvania does it quite often. There's been a number of TIFs that have been used in this area, and so we brought some examples of TIFs that have been put in place, how they've been used, and then how the different governing bodies have participated. And then lastly, we brought with us a chart to kind of explain the process so that you could become familiar with the different legislative steps that need to be taken before a TIF can take effect. So again, the first step is to have a TIF committee established to look at the project as a whole, determine whether they think that that TIF is even worth discussing, and then under what terms that would happen. So today, again, is really just an informational meeting. The project itself, we think, is excellent from a retail perspective. We think that the tenants that are looking to come to this project are well-invested in the types of tenants that we deal with. So as far as an asset, we would look at it to be first-class, it's something that most communities would be very excited about having in terms of having a tax base that would be augmented by national credit retailers as well as some local, different retailers. So the community, we believe, would be looking at having a project that would have some new retailers that are not here, some new restaurants and other uses that many people will find that they're looking to have. We think that it will generate a number of taxes and benefits, like jobs, and taxes beyond just the real estate taxes that would go to the benefit of all the parties involved. And then of the TIF itself, the increment that would be generated will be significantly more than the amount that we would ask be involved in helping advance the construction costs, so that there's an economic win as well. It's a general summary. Any questions, please?
Well, let's start off by finding out if the board wishes to ask anything particular of either of the gentleman.
Yes. I just want to restate in my own words to make sure that I have the understanding. The parcel that question currently generates that $7,000 in real estate taxes for the school district. We're proposing to develop the parcel, and the financial assistance we're looking to receive is really from the taxes the parcel itself would generate. So if the TIF financing goes through, the school district that currently receives $7,000 from that parcel would have the opportunity to receive probably several hundred thousand dollars for a part of the same parcel.
And I think if I could expand on that. What I left out is too much detail. I don't know how much detail we'll get in tonight, but ultimately, what happened if everybody was willing to move forward is the Lehigh County Industrial Development Authority would spearhead the process. These kind of projects go through an authority like that. So the TIF committee hopefully would include members from that group, the school, the township, and the county, and ourselves. And ultimately, would identify exactly how many taxes, based on work with the assessor's office, would be created from the project. And again, just as you said, only a portion of the taxes from this project could be used. So we would then ultimately ask the county authority to float bonds that would take payment from a portion of the real estate taxes to maintain those bonds, and then the present value of those would be provided for construction costs. The school district would have no liability whatsoever. The school district would have no responsibility whatsoever. And at this step, all we're asking the school to do is join a committee. If the school, actually, tonight, frankly, we're not even asking for that. We're not, we will be coming back to what we asked, and we're not asking that tonight. But when we do, the school have no responsibility if they join the committee and decide that they don't like the idea, or if the committee comes to conclusions that the school can't support. There is, at any time, the school has the ability to opt out and not be involved without any further responsibility. If the project does move forward to completion, and we do ultimately have the blessing of a TIF committee who then gets votes from the borders of all the municipality and entities that are involved, at that point, if bonds are floated, the school would still have no responsibility. All the school's doing, ultimately, if they agree, is allowing a portion of the taxes that would be generated, that will be generated, to go towards the bonds.
Due taxes.
Due taxes. So yes.
So no, no, you see, taxpayers are being affected by this. No taxes from any current spend taxpayers are going to that project.
That's correct. And if anything, certainly, we would propose that the taxes to the general population would increase significantly through the project even with the TIF and without the TIF but for the TIF. Do they want us?
Let's see. Stachas?
Yes. So do I understand correctly that that the authority is the one that's paying for the bonds?
What would happen is if bonds are floated forward to the project and create construction funding, which will be able to be looked for, there would be an annual payment that would need to service those bonds, and they would come through the real estate taxes. So the tenants that would operate the shopping center would pay their taxes, whatever it would be, whether there was a TIF or not. But then the assessor's office or the tax collector, frankly, would collect those taxes. And if that And at that point, no, whatever the percentages of that revenue that's supposed to go towards the bonds would then be paid to the bonds, and the rest would then go to the school and county in this case, as they would otherwise. So the tenants pay the same amount they would always have paid. And the only person that would pay the bond would be the documents, whatever one would agree to expel it exactly, how those taxes get applied between the bonds and the taxing accounts. Again, those details would be reviewed in detail by all the folks that would be involved.
Okay. And banks aren't responsible?
Well, there's a number of ways to do that. The interest rate of the bonds will significantly be affected by who backs them up. They could simply be backed up by the tenants. I mean, the anchor tenants that will be the majority of the income taxes property are first-class national credit tenants. In addition, we've met with the state. There's a state TIP guarantee program that the Commonwealth has that encourages these programs. And we've met with the folks at the state about that, and there is a TIP guarantee program that could be applied, applicable to the project. In addition, there could be other guarantees that are provided. There's a number of ways to guarantee the bonds. The goal would be to make them as saleable, frankly, as possible because then the lower interest rate would allow for additional proceeds. But again, regardless of who backs them up, ultimately, the TIP, whoever buys those bonds is buying whatever the bond is that is packaged up, and then at that point, they get an interest rate return on their money for the risk that they're taking. It's our goal to try to minimize that risk, which would obviously lower the interest rate. I hope I answered your question.
Mr. Parker?
Similar questions. I was just concerned, if the project's successful, I understand the financing. What if the project fails and the tenants don't do well? Who pays off the bond? I guess whoever's backing the bond.
Yes. Now, keep in mind, when the project's built, if one of the stores decides to close, obviously, the real estate taxes are still set. So one of the things that makes us comfortable even considering this type of a structure is that the real estate taxes are obligated to be paid by Target, Costco, Wake Firm, which is ShopRite's parent company, which are all triple, they're all credit companies. So the bond folks that would put this together ultimately will look at the credit of the people that are backing up the real estate tax payments and then assess a risk on the bond, just like the school floated bond, frankly. And then they'll be offered for sale on the public market, and the market will determine rate.
But they work pointfully, even if for some reason, the Targets were more successful or the Costco were successful and the stores closed, they're owed, Target and Costco will own their facilities, and they will be responsible for paying the real estate taxes, whether the stores are open or not. In order for them to default on paying those taxes, the entire company of Target and Costco has to liquidate them, and we feel that that's extremely unlikely.
Or they'd have to sell if they sold the property.
If they sold, someone would still be obligated to pay the real estate taxes.
Well, on first round here, I'll ask a question that's corollary to that. The usual thing that we've seen happening in the recession is these industrial concerns or large retail concerns, close up shops, say, or reduce their operations, and then they go in and ask for an assessment appeal to lower the assessments so their taxes go down. What happens in the case where they successfully get one of those appeals?
In the structure of the document will be a requirement that they agree that they will not appeal their taxes lower than or that would make the bond payments. So those are some of the details that get worked in the TIP, but that's what happens generally is. They agree that because this money is being used for a project, they have to, Target, Costco, and the folks who are as part of the project, and us, would have to agree that we will not, we would forego any rights of appeal of a tax so that we wouldn't create that issue.
Stasios, do you remember?
Yes, I had to. Because it's a government money, does the prevailing way, do you pay some cost of the whole project or just the part? Maybe she could really split it out. Is the whole project then?
No, you can, we, the part that the monies go to would certainly need to be used with the prevailing. And so, again, it would depend what the funds are specifically used for, but for example, if they reach for traffic improvements, then those improvements will need to be installed using prevailing.
With a separate contract just for those?
Mr. Urshaw? So the question that I have, you said there's a percentage that's fixed by the different taxing bodies. They say, okay, a certain percentage of the new taxes will go towards servicing the bond payments. What if the percentage of the taxes ends up generating a surplus above and beyond what's needed to service those bonds?
Then those tax revenues go to the authority. If this thing moves forward, if the project moves forward and ultimately, the TIP committee establishes the contribution of the percentage of taxes from the school and from the county that would respond, that would be it. So in the future, if taxes are increased, if the billage rates increase, if additional retail is built on the property, that creates an additional revenue source for real estate taxes, all of that goes to the taxing authorities as they would normally. Only the amount that the TIP committee and then the boards approve goes to the bonds, goes to the bonds, and everything else that are after would go then to the tax accounts.
Right. Let's say, let's just use some round numbers. Those are easy. Let's say it's a million dollars in incremental taxes to pay out, and 20% is the number that is agreed by all the bodies. So 20% would be $200,000. What if the actual bond payments are 180,000? What happens to that extra 20,000? Is that returned to the taxing authorities?
Yes, yes. Only the amount that's in the service of the bond. And what'll happen actually in practice, again, if we move forward, would be that it'll be open until those details are spelled out.
Basically, the bank is trusting the bonds, hold that extra money, and if it fills up enough, the bonds will be repaid before it's ready to be transferred outside. So if there's more money coming in, how pretty big that outside, the TIP will be in since we have a lot of money to pay off that thing.
But ultimately, only the money that is needed to service the bonds, or whatever term is agreed upon, is allowed to be taken from the real estate taxes and everything that are entered goes to the tax accounts as they would normally in their normal sort of those taxes.
Is there any current estimate of the amount of the bonds that would, some rough figure of the bonds that would be needed to complete this project?
That's a tough question. I guess the reality is that the answer is dependent on the other sources of revenue that we have. We've applied for various grants and other sources of funds. So there's a gap that we've identified, but we don't think that the gap that's going to be requested of the TIP committee is anywhere close to that total number. What we talked about in terms of the dollar amount that we think is at risk here is about fourteen and a half million dollars. Of that amount, we think less than half is something that we're going to ask the TIP committee to consider. And hopefully, as we hear back from the other grants and the other applications we've made, the number we can get to win them. The goal is for the TIP to be the last case of the puzzle. So that to the extent we're extremely successful in achieving other funds, the TIP would shrink and be only needed to fill the gap that's left. And the timing of it is such that we believe by the time the folks on the TIP committee are established, the TIP committee meets, it's going to be a number of months during that time we'll have established more concrete numbers on our side so that that TIP committee will have actual dollars to talk about, and hopefully, that gap has shrunk significantly. We generally try to work with certain numbers and make it larger so that ultimately, everyone happy to discuss them.
So you're currently estimating between seven and 14 million dollars in rough terms is the range we're looking at?
We, I think 14 has the total. I think that the amount that we think we need to get from the TIP is this is less.
Are there other questions for the members of the board?
We're not familiar with your company yet. Could you briefly describe some of the shopping centers you're developing?
Sure. The TIP firm has done, and many as well. Wilbur Group has been building primarily shopping centers for about 25 years. We're based in Blue Bell, Pennsylvania. We've developed about 6 million square feet of retail, and our clients are generally Target, Costco, Walmart, and the boxes that you're familiar with. We are proud that most of our shopping centers are in both community areas. We work hard with all of the stakeholders when we build a project like this. You can imagine the amount of people that want to have input on something this significant and this influential in a neighborhood. So we work with township, with the county, with the school districts, with the residents to try to identify what is that everyone, what it is that everyone's looking for, and ultimately, end up with something that is an asset that we feel most people are proud of. We are recently, probably, about seven years, been working on other types of projects. We've done some residential projects, we've done condo projects. We're about to break ground on a large student housing project at Temple University in, actually, in the next two weeks. But primarily, what we focus on is shopping center development, like the project we have here today. And in 25 years, we have built 11 of these centers, 12 of these centers. The most recent close to here is in Berks County. We built in Exeter Township a shopping center by Exeter College that's anchored by Target and Lowe's. And in Amber, PA, we did something called Silver Ridge, which is Walmart and Lowe's. And generally, I think you'll find, I guess, closest to here really is Exeter Township. You'll find that if you speak to the folks at Exeter Township or Company, they'll tell you that the things that we said that we would do, the promises and commitments we've made, we honor all of. It's extremely important to us that as we move on to the next project, that those folks can check back and see that we've done what we said we would. So I believe that we asking will give you less references that we want you to check out because I believe you'll feel comfortable that what we tell you, we can go where we will.
I think we look forward to that, Mr. Urshaw. Mr. Parker, do you have something else you want to say?
I would simply say that I would hope that my right here as a developer is almost as good as it goes anywhere.
Mr. Parker?
The, are there restrictions on what the money borrowed or the bond money can be spent on? Is it, for example, restricted only to remediation efforts or does that just have to be part of it?
The TIP committee established, again, that nobody's looking for us to do the private portions of the project of those funds. So it's generally for infrastructure, remediation, things of that nature. I don't believe it's restricted. Pabellas in Amber did a significant TIP 10, 12 years ago, and I believe some of those funds within the building itself, that's not our goal. We would not look for plus in those types of things. This is really for the public, improving the infrastructure and that nature.
Mr. Urshaw? So I guess when this does come back to the board for development, the question will be faced is whether we think that there could be some other development on the property, maybe lesser in scope, uses a different part of the project, that could generate equivalent or superior revenues without our involvement in the TIP, and how likely that is to happen and how soon it would happen. I guess that's, so it's more of an opportunity cost that we have to consider rather than, there's essentially no tax dollars currently at risk. It's not like we're tearing down existing facilities that are generating a certain amount of tax revenues that we would lose should the project then fail after the demolition. So I think that I'm looking forward very much to hearing what final proposals do come forward.
Sure. And I would offer that the diocese of Allentown would likely use a developer in a project of any scale, regardless of who was going to come to the conclusion physically of what we said. I'm sure you can build something on that property. What we found in, no, I had too much detail, but what we found is when we identified the issue, the depths and the characteristics of what's there, the first thing we did was relocate the buildings. That's actually something that took a number of months for us to work out, how to relocate the buildings. But even doing that, even a parking lot can't be above that. So we're talking about something with relatively no weight, eight inches of stone and asphalt, even that required remediation of the mine wash above it. And there's more extensive remediation needed for buildings if you move it out of the mine wash area, but even in the mine wash area itself, it would, it was something that needed. So I would, it would be difficult to do enough sensitivity analysis to prove that nothing would be built, but certainly, anything of any substance that's going to have any weight to it, we would be comfortable in having experts up here who could explain to you the results of the data that we have and why it would be very limited. And frankly, a number of people have looked at doing just that on the property, and as you see today, this is the way it does.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I have a couple more handouts which I'll pass around.
Why don't you give them to the board secretary?
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on our agenda is a presentation on district technology by Mr. Michael Moan. Our information technology director. Val's with me tonight?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. We are here to, well, I'm forgetting first. We're here to unveil our first Penn School District app. So I hope that people brought their phones, cell phones, smartphones, smartphone. It is crazy. And so far, it is starting fantastic, isn't it? Okay. I know Mr. Cooper has his phone, let me tell you, Mr. Cooper, maybe you're ready to go. All right. Okay. So basically, this is one of the first apps that we've come up with. The team has developed internally here. First, we're going to take a little look at it, then we're going to give it a try. How it works, basically, this app takes any piece of our website, any section that we had, and pushes it out to a handheld device that has internet access. As you can see here, these are some of the sections we're pulling from our website right now. Things like, on our website, we have an email directory. Go to the email directory by our handheld device, I can look up my teacher's name, I can send an email to my teacher if I want. Our whole page, obviously, we have news every day, and on our homepage, that's under our headline section. Every time that we post a headline, it would be forced right to your handheld device. We also have our site set up for, our app set up for Google Docs. So if you wanted to look and map the schools, you can find where the schools are, see where the addresses are, things like that. It's modular, so anything on our website, we can send to this app. The app basically needs no human interaction, as long as we tell it what we want to go to the app. We can do that, we can move things, get at things, and drop things, so there's no manual intervention with the app. So if you were to go to the East Penn School District website right now, eastpennsd.org, the website will realize what type of device you have, whether it's an iPod or a smartphone or Android device, and it will reformat the website to the device you have. We are also packaging this app to deploy to iTunes. So at this point, everyone who has a device could be connected to the website, and it should be reformatting it right now. Mr. Cooper, how's it working? I see.
It's good.
It does look good. I appreciate the lie. We turned this app on this afternoon, and we have it running right now. Like I said, the website will sense your device and it'll reformat whatever device you have, but in the future, we are going to put that app to iTunes for download. Now, we do have some future apps coming out, and again, these apps are being developed by the Office of Technology using free software. Oh, we have a winner? I just had this assumption and just would. This app has been developed by the Office of Technology, our team, using some free open source software. Now, we also have some future app ideas that will be coming out shortly, and we'll unveil them when we're, when we're ready. So.
I might have to go to their browser first.
You might have to go to their browser first to get it, but it will push it down to your, to your phone.
Works on both smartphone and, yeah.
Okay. Which is, okay. All right. So how are we going to get this app and other things out there? One of the things we just launched is our iTunes channel. If you go to iTunes right now and log into iTunes K, iTunes U, iTunes University, and select iTunes U, iTunes K-12, and you scroll down, and you're going to see approximately like 100 school districts listed, and down under, the East Penn School District is there. Now, I will say, there's about 100 or so school districts listed. That's in the world, not just in the United States. And here we have the homepage for our iTunes account. Now, what you see up here, these are basically empty shelves of files we had to post there in order to get our iTunes active. We have something out there. So we're toying with ideas like EdgeLink right here, our emergency broadcast system. We can put out instruction sets, people can download them, how to use the system from home. Internet safety information, Mahar, digital portfolios, Moodle. We have STEM out here. Again, the projects aren't listed there. We need something to post to get the site active, but eventually, we'll be able to post student work out there to download anywhere in the world that anybody has a device that can connect to iTunes, so we're pretty excited about that. Next, we are actually on Twitter right now. We have a Twitter account that will come up. We had some filter problems with iTunes. It came up, that's fantastic. We had some filter problems today with iTunes. Basically, we're going to use this Twitter account as a one-way communication as things occur inside the district. I know Dr. Sid Burger's tweeting everywhere. Everything that is coming up, you will be getting the tweets, and this is a one- And this is a one-way communication throughout everyone inside the district. So if we look over on our website right now, there's a Twitter link you can follow. If you go to the website and sign up for it, you will get the automatic tweets to your device that you have every time something is put out. So this is blow, excited. There, oh, over there. So we have three tweets we started up so far, and very interesting enough, this morning when this Waskowski and I started this, we had one follower and we have six by tonight, so we didn't even turn on. And yes, the first Twitter follower was your husband, Randy. So that's up and running now, we're pretty excited about it. Again, that'd be a one-way communication out to the district, and it'll work on our, on our devices. You can sign up on our website for it. Next thing we have here, we have a new program, Lego Robotic Mindstorms for our STEM project opening in the fall here. Basically, with Lego Mindstorms, you build your Lego robot using a schematic editor. You get the various sensors, whether it's heat or color or sound. You connect it to your computer, and you program your robot to do whatever you want, whether it's a small program, large program, it's limited by your imagination. It's modular, drag and drop formula.
We're getting these what level?
At the elementary level, the STEM unit. So here's our robot, it's our first, here's our first robot. He's been programmed with his simple color sensors. Okay. So he sees the East Penn School District green, and he goes crazy, he loves green. And he stands around, and for whatever reason, other colors that pop up.
Small, red, we don't want to be red.
I'm colorblind, I, so that's a very simplistic robot. It's a pretty awesome system we're, we're getting into with our auto sent program. I actually saw on YouTube a week or so ago, somebody devised a Lego robot where you can put a Rubik's Cube into the robot, and the robot actually solves the Rubik's Cube formula. So, you know, our robot's looking pretty weak right now, but that's the first one. So we're okay, it's just there's unlimited modular programming language, it's going to be a fantastic program. So next, we're going to unveil in a few weeks or so, an online safety course for our parents. How this works is a parent inside the district logs into the East Penn Technology site and goes to the Technology Office of Technology site. So you click on our portal, we have a portal for employees, parents, and students. And they click on the parent portal, and that's your Home Access Center login, the place where you get Home Access Center forms, change your emergency contact, and we have a new East Penn Cyber School Safety Course. Now, inside this course, we populated with a lot of information. Now, Mr. Waskowski said we do this because it's us internal here. Internally, when a parent hits this, it logs in as guest automatically. It logs in automatically, and then we have various tabs for information on predation, cyberbullying, female safety, social networking, sexting, various things that we know that people need to know out there. So you log into this Internet Safety Course from home. You get to look at materials, read PDF files, look at videos, get information, you can take assessments, you can take quizzes online with it. Really, the project is two-fold. Number one, there's a lot of danger out there. We really want to let the parents know what's going on out there. Number two, our parents have been hearing about Moodle for years, or listening to kids talk about Moodle. Now, they get to log into Moodle, they get to see the materials, they get to take the quizzes and the assessments. And at the very end, we have a finish tab where parents, after they take the course and look at the materials, they can give us some feedback on the course, so we can keep this course alive and breathing and moving documents so it doesn't stay stale, so if something comes up new out there we don't know about, we can add it to it. So that is ready to launch for the beginning of the school year. Now, the next thing that we have is the Professional Development Moodle we launched this year. We're going to log back into Moodle right now out of our guest account. We started, we moved our Professional Development into Moodle itself. So if I'm a teacher in the district or employee, and I log into Moodle, in my upper right-hand corner, I have a Professional Development icon. I select that, and all of the information we used to have on our website and our internet is now moved into one repository, the guidelines, how it works. And really, if I'm a teacher and I want to enroll in a class with Professional Development, I can go in here and I can enroll into a class. If I'm a facilitator, I can look at my class roster, I can take attendance. The course evaluations are done, and this is all paperless, this is all digital. And let's scroll down the screen here, I'm going to go over for classes, so I look at all of my schools. I can find my school, I can see my required courses for the year, my optional courses for the year. I can register and I can take some classes. Now, if you go down to the very bottom, the technology classes that we have right here, we have 10 optional technology classes. These technology classes were all delivered online this summer, and we're going to continue to deliver them online. The classes were developed during the day by the team. They were put online, they can be taken anytime during the summertime. And if there's any technical problems along the way, they submit a help request button to one of the team members nights, weekends, during the day. We answer the questions, so that's working very well. We're going to continue that in the fall and spring. I know there are other directors and other people that are going to be looking at, maybe starting to incorporate this into some more online technologies, and maybe some more hybrid approaches where if you do a three-hour session, perhaps you could do an hour or so at home, doing some work, and then coming in, commuting a facilitator for the second half of the course. And we started that in the springtime and in the summertime, and it's going very well so far, so we're pretty excited about that. Next, you've heard about green report cards. Last year, we put our report cards online, going paperless and going green is such an important thing to us. One feature we've added now is we have a PDF file of your report card on the Home Access Centers. When parents log in now, they view the grades, view their report card. Now, the option to download the PDF of that report card if they wanted to print a hard copy of it, if they wanted to set it aside in our private court themselves. So more creative, more green initiatives, the more we can do, the better, and we're pressing forward for that. And one of the last things, one of the shows tonight quick, in Moodle.
Well, I think that's important because that was on the feedback we got from parents, some people like to hold up their report card in their hand. They're rather going back and doing it the old way. Now, we create a PDF file so they can print it on their own.
And that's right in the Home Access Center, where you log in to see the grades, and you see the report card. But if you want that actual track pulled, you can download the PDF format. Now, our technology database and project examples we've been working on, when anybody logs into Moodle and then log into our project examples, basically what we've been doing over the past year or so is start putting our technology projects in Moodle itself. So if I look at the top here, Val hovers over to digital storytelling. Let's say I don't know much about digital storytelling. It pops up, it tells me what it is and what tools we have inside the district that support it, along with communication, apps, bypass presentations. Now, if I wanted to do it the other way, we have a search box, and I can search in something like STEM. If I type in STEM and do a search, and that'll show me all of the STEM projects in the district. So you can, you can search for it several different ways. And from there, you can see projects that are posted. You can download a project, you can view the project, you can see who did it, when, and all the supporting materials with it. That's gotten some good feedback, it's growing, it takes a lot of work to produce this, but it's something that's very, very dear to our heart and very important, and I think going very well. That's some of the things that are going on this year, just some of the things going on. Obviously, Dr. Seiberg is supported by the NSBA, visit next springtime. A lot of the technologies and a lot of the things are coming out, a lot of student work and presentation we're going to have. Moodle is not just a learning environment, we're expanding it to professional development databases in other areas. Being mobile, being wireless, using open source, free software, and learning anytime, anywhere is everything we're all about. So that's just some of the new things we have coming out this year. So any questions on some of our new technologies?
I guess this was an older technology. The Home Access Center, the lead administrative assistant in my office was raving to me about it. And I don't have any children in the district, so I don't, I'm not able to see it. If there is a shelf, then perhaps you could show to us.
Do we have any taped Home Access Center? I don't, we don't have, if we go in, we can go in as the Home Access Center administrators and replicate a student log in, if I would put student information up here.
I was just wondering if a shelf could, then just.
It's really, have you, the Internet Safety Course I just showed, when you look at it, there's, there's tabs, and you log in, and first thing it starts with attendance and discipline, their class schedule, and their grading. It's a pretty robust, we're missing pieces out of it. Now, we added, of course, the report card PDF download. And I think we're about in the third year of that, and the rate of people using that system is pretty high now.
She tells me she checks in together during the school year several times a day.
Yes, we hear the kids in the hallway talking about it, too. Of course, there's different words they're using, but, which by the way, down the road, there is the ability to have a student portal in East School Plus, our student information system, where students can log in and check their own grades and check their own schedule and make schedule requests. But that would be down the road if we ever mentioned down to the regular device kind of technology where it's actually had a device inside the district. So it's good to hear.
Thank you, it's very exciting.
Mr. Bob?
For the classes or for the administrators and teachers, I think it could take online, that's what we showed.
Yes, well, we, we, when we started the idea of putting Professional Development in Moodle, really, we wanted to do a couple of things. We wanted to go paperless, and we wanted it digital, and we wanted to be able to start to track electronically because Moodle's a database. In other words, I take Moodle 101, I can never take that again. I always have access to it because of my knowledge base, I can take Moodle 2, Moodle 3. We decided in springtime that, you know, we were going to step out there, and we were going to put our technology classes online, that we developed the curriculum online, put it out there for the summertime. And quite honestly, we opened it up from July 1st to the end of August. We gave ourselves a little bit wider of a window to try to test it with, and it's worked out pretty well. Quite honestly, there's not been a lot of technical support needed. We're waiting for everybody to start coming back and give us some feedback because we believe we created three-hour courses. We, of course, it could be an hour and 45 minutes or five or six hours, but when everybody comes back, we will be able to hone that for the fall sessions that come up next, so.
Mike, I just want to give the board a little update of what we're doing with electronic freaking cartridges.
Well, some of the work that we are working, we're working on, there's, there's a couple of different factors that are coming together into a perfect storm, if you would. We've been talking about our own cyber school, we've been talking about putting classes fully online. We've been talking about using a blended approach, you know, can we have a class where a student takes, is really, is in two days' out, and digital textbooks? All of these ideas are coming together. We've been working on a way to use Moodle to, in a sense, create online classes that would incorporate the digital textbooks, create classes online, which eventually we could use them online for, let's say, oversubscribed classes. Might be option for a summertime, taking, picking up a class, Family and Consumer Sciences. Maybe that would be something kids could take next summer during the year anytime they want. So we're combining a lot of different ideas into one right now. It's, it's a, it's a large project where we have our, we're sticking our teeth into it.
Thank you. This is all exciting work. One thing that my kids always dreaded last year was to talk with Dad in front of the computer screen. We had a number of interesting conversations. Why did you get a zero in that homework assignment? Didn't you do it? Oh, I did it, but I forgot it at home. Well, that was a week and a half ago. Why haven't you taken it in and given it to your teacher late for partial credit activities? Oh, well, I don't know. So it's, it's been an interesting journey for us. The one thing that I would hope, I noticed that, that over the last year, especially toward the end of the school year, I would go in there, and there had been no classroom posted for a month. So obviously, the teachers were getting behind in their grading and getting posted. So I don't know if we're going to eventually put in standards, because there were times when I would go in, and a week later, I would go back, and not a thing had been posted in any of the classes for one of my children. And I'm thinking, they must have done something cradable in that week, because I see them working on homework, and I heard them talking about tests and quizzes. So have we talked about that, what kind of standards we have, or windows updating, or is that yet to be determined?
Have we discussed that in the secondary principles meeting? It really in our, in our beginning days of this process right now, we have been discussing some type of timelines, processes to put out there. But I, I can't tell you at this point when, who will be ready for this coming year.
Well, we can certainly have those conversations.
And, and you know, I came from a previous district when we had launched this right before I came to the East Penn School District. And when we first launched it, that came up, and it very quickly corrected itself because parents were calling, parents were calling, that almost the peer pressure, the professional pressure kind of sorted that out because people know now you are calling and you are looking for that. And the expectation is there that it's not going to go for too much longer. So we are, but we have discussed that. I'm not sure if we're ready to say when, we'll have the timeframe set for it.
Let's just, so I've had preliminary discussions with the association.
Okay, great. I also appreciate the idea of having the report card in a PDF format. I got in the habit of printing the report cards down. Of course, I did this usually after they had gone to sleep, so I took my reading pen, not my writing pen, and I wrote comments all over about how they're doing good and how a couple of things they might want to work on. So it's, I think it's, it's been a great resource for me as a parent to be a little more on top of what's happening with my children's education and making sure that they're not slacking off, that they're putting in the effort that they need and when they're struggling with a subject, that I'm getting it now. So I, my plaudits, my kudos, my appreciation for the staff for making this available to us.
Share that with the team, thank you very much.
Mr. Bob?
Is there a percentage of students or families that still have a tablet?
Boy, you know, we, when we put out the Home Access Center registration, there's a good percentage of people, not I shouldn't say a good percentage, there's a percentage of people that said, I don't have internet access. There's a very small percentage, very small percentage say, I have internet access, but I don't want to belong to this, I don't want to do this. It's hard because there's a lot of mix of people in the area. If I had a guess, I'd say we're over 90% internet access. I don't know if that's Bayrek or not, but I'm, it's a pretty high percentage. We do work with the library and have access there, and I, and I believe we have some access set up for people that can come in.
Bring up an interesting point, because this was a, this was a interesting dialogue that ongoing issue with some of the people that may have wanted to return the days yesterday, just give up, print report cards. And I think we were doggedly determined to riddle that number down. And I think we did that, and I want to certainly compliment the principals who really worked hard at that. But this year, I think our goal is not to download the hard copies, is to get parents to come into the school or into a place where they can access that. We want parents to get the good habits. We're always, we always recognize that there's going to be a sliver of parents who may not have, where with all due care. But we'd still like them to participate by coming to school and make the accommodations, rather just printing a hard copy and surrender. We want them to commit it and get used to looking at the data.
I think that's a good thing to go ahead, like you test.
Yes, well, one of the things, and again, one of the mountains we're going to have to climb, and Michael mentioned, bring your own device, BYOD. And that certainly will be an ethical issue that we're going to have to discuss internally and probably come back with the board with some recommendations. Because if we start allowing kids to bring their own devices to school safely, we certainly don't want to have any youngsters that's not having access to something. So our, our thinking will have to shift to, instead of buying a whole lot of classic computers, maybe we buy X amount of iPads, for example, that we can lease to parents. So we're going to have to start shifting our thinking about that and making sure that everyone has access, especially. And really, if we push hard, I think that's the next big frontier for us is bringing our own devices to school. It certainly makes sense, both from practical terms and probably from financial terms as well. It's something that Michael had talked about for a long, long time, but the world is coming closer, and it's not like he's been doing nothing, but this week, we've really been working a lot on developing a safe internal network where we can assure parents and kids are not going to download the other kind of things that we don't want them to download.
And earlier the last year, we spent a lot of time, because initially, when we put out our wireless network, three years ago, we put a wireless network in the past year or so, and in the way you started gaining ground, we decided we split our network into multiple segments. So right now, we have a faculty and staff network. We have a student network, and we did, and a guest network. And we've been working on that probably for the past year or so. And that's how we can be more dynamic, like on a, on a teacher network, we can say, okay, on the teacher network, identified exactly by machine, you are a teacher machine, you can have access to YouTube or other sites that are not available in the student network. Be the same logic if there was a BYOD network. The next level after that would make you sure that their devices, they could get access on their own device. There's, there's a lot of different things that we go with BYOD. But we're kind of setting up the network now, almost like a university campus, where we want to have all segmented, most physically and electronically, so they're all on separate networks, and they can get to each other, you know, to be able to.
But that's the next one here we have across. Other questions?
Not so much a question, but I, one of the greatest assets we have, we spent so much time, is of course, our parents. And really, the culture of the gray shades, wanting to encourage students to do homework, address them about it when they don't, as I can. As a student here, yes, six years ago now. And I, as much as I would have hated this when I was a student here, it, it... I was a student here, it will help parents keep on top of students, make sure that they're getting the work done, learning. I really appreciate the work committed in this, making it easier for our parents to keep continuing to make sure that their children do things, you know, to get a solid education.
And I should be clear that my discussions with my children are not always, "What are you doing wrong?" They try first and foremost to find the things they're doing right. So, look, you've got, you're getting a 93 in this class, that's fantastic work. Look, you got a 38 out of 40 on that test, well done. But as I think about the things that we're doing here, really, digital literacy is going to be as fundamental a skill as basic arithmetic was to my parents. This is something that people today absolutely must have in almost any career that you can imagine. I know people who work in what we typically think of as fairly low-tech fields, driving a delivery truck. Well, most delivery trucks these days have a computer on board, and they have to operate and log their deliveries, and it might track their fuel consumption, and it might track their routing, track traffic conditions, and suggest rerouting along the way. This is stuff that they have to learn to be able to use and be comfortable with. And the sooner we really acclimatize our children to these sorts of technologies, the bigger step they'll have. And I certainly applaud the district for the forward thinking that's gone into this. I think we've made great strides in the last few years here. I'm looking forward to seeing more of that.
I'd also like to echo the comments of my fellow board members about, and had some job, you and your tech team have done to bring the district into the 21st century.
Thank you. Second century, yeah. And I would point out even more than the delivery trucks, the fallback job when I graduated high school was the people who'd go out and become ditch diggers. That was the phrase that was used. We have to take care of the people who dig ditches. Well, nowadays, people digging ditches with a backhoe have a GPS and a history measuring device at the electronic level, and a whole bunch of other things that we have that were not envisioned when those settlements came out. We do have to prepare people for the continual learning of tomorrow that we're going to be faced with as they develop their careers. So I, again, congratulate you and your team on the job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Val.
You have at least one more follow-up.
Sorry.
You're on 10, since I have a problem.
That won't be a...
Make sure to give you a follow-up, right?
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the contractors who are attending the schools under Dr. Seidberg's motions of severance. Is there any discussion on this motion?
I simply want to say, having regarded the team that here, because I believe you had a candidate five years ago, and then a visit to Dr. Seidberg's, then the district, and then having him come and visit this district, and our teachers, and our parents, and our students, it was quite an undertaking, and I was so delighted when you accepted our offer. And I'm delighted that you began accepting our offer, and interested in taking up our offer for another five years. Dr. Seidberg's presentation tonight was just a big, wonderful, wonderful leadership to the broader district, and I thank you very much for your professionalism, and thank you for your dedication.
Any other comments? Mr. Burzall, you have all.
I remember when we were working through the details, I was serving on a jury for a three-week trial. Every time we had a break, I was on my phone to Mr. Fisher or to Dr. Seidberg, trying to break out the details. It was, it was an interesting process. I'm really glad we don't have to go through it again right now, but I'm more especially glad that Dr. Seidberg has chosen to dismiss the last few years of his career with us. It has been a great benefit to the district, has provided outstanding leadership, and I very much value my association with him and witnessing the depth of care that he has for the students, his focus on the academics at all levels, and really not just the academics, but the whole student. He brings so much energy and so much vitality to the role of superintendent. I can't imagine we could ever have made a better choice than that. Thank you, Dr. Seidberg.
Mr. Stoltz.
Dr. Seidberg, bless you for wanting to continue to deal with me over the next several years. While we've not always agreed, I will look forward to any more spirited discussions in the future. Thank you.
No more comments. Perry, Mr. Burzall, you have all.
Mr. Archard.
Aye.
Ms. Doncha.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Polakana.
Aye.
Mr. Baughner.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Mr. Ballack.
Aye.
Hey, folks.
I would like to just say that having negotiated the extension of Dr. Seidberg's contract, I'd like to appreciate professionalism, which he has brought to the job, and having also sat on that with the new committee and looking at the candidates, I think firmly convinced that we made the right choice, and that the East Penn School District has benefited greatly, and the taxpayers have benefited greatly from all of his efforts to tighten the financial ship and maintain our leadership in technology, as well as dealing fairly inequitably with both the public and his staff. So, thank you, Dr. Seidberg. I wish you five more years of continued progress in the district.
We will now move on to your report. Can you tell us about some of that progress?
Well, thank you very much, Ryan. I appreciate, and as I've said this many times, nothing against the districts I've worked with before, but by far, this is, that's just a guy I've been associated with, and I, at this point in my life, I can't imagine what you've got to do else. So thank you for that. Quite a confidence. And I think, as I'm prepared to extend my stay here, I do want to thank a person. We have a, we have a family here, I think, at least ten. We try and create a family for our employees. And tonight, on the agenda item, we have one of our most valued family members who's gone to opt to retire. Thirty-eight years in this district, run the Shangwall, and I think I would regret if I didn't say thank you to her. Every day, I walk into that office, and I will tell you, folks, that she is a one-person machine dedicated to doing right for our employees. Thirty-eight years with our district, and that is quite astounding. I don't know if you want to add anything, Mr. Blancy, but...
One, too. Thank you very much. Lynda has worked in the school district office for 38 years. During that time, she's developed an understanding of all of the jobs in the business office, and she's been able to help with almost all of them. Over the years, she has become known as a payroll legend. Lynda was so good, Lynda was so good at using our previous business software, where the software manager would ask her for advice before they made any changes in the software. She's very knowledgeable, hardworking, loyal, and dedicated, with a wealth of knowledge, and she would schedule her vacation around the payroll cycle, and sometimes cut her vacation short to make sure that the paychecks were done on time. She has also involved her community, and has taught fitness plus community education courses at her school and at the Williams City. Some of our employees refer to her and her as the glue that holds this office to him. When she retires later this fall, this office will be a loss without her knowledge and advice, but we will have to learn to manage about it. I and the entire staff wish her and her husband the best of luck and good health in their retirement, and we would all ask her, please come back to business if you get a chance. Thank you.
Want to remind the board and committee that the new teacher orientation is going to happen tomorrow, 8:30, right in this very room, or in this downstairs. And we don't have numbers we've had to pass, but we're very proud of the people who are now bringing it to our family, and we look forward to a wonderful three days of new teacher orientation. It's hard to believe it's August 13th. Just next Tuesday, we'll have our annual back assembly with our staff, Dr. 8:30 in May's High School. We invite Mr. Ballard to offer some remarks. Mrs. Arnold offered remarks, I will have something to say. Mr. O'Nan and I are going to give the staff a technology update, and we hope we can set the stage for another successful school year. Also want to thank those of you who sent me comments regarding our recommendations, who postponed world land transportation, eliminated transportation for a little bit of time. As I mentioned last board meeting, I think we have a good, solid plan. We got some comments from, I know Mr. Baughner, they were wonderful comments. Thank you so much. We really appreciate that, and I really mean that. And Dr. Mirabella, Mr. Blancy, and Dr. Boyer spoke about that, and we see no reason why we can't bring your suggestions into our overall plans. A couple of things. I don't know if we're quite done yet, but looking at the big picture, and having very positive meetings at lower country township, I think we, it wasn't so much that we weren't ready to do it, it's just that we wanted to do a very good job, and we did not want to leave the situation with some questions that we kind of answered. But I, for one, want to thank Bruce Fossman and the people that we've worked with at the township, and I know Bruce is, has some work to do with his board of commissioners, but if the safety and proposals go through, as Bruce is going to recommend, we're going to have six traffic zones that are going to surround that, so I think that's going to really be bringing a high degree of awareness that kids are going to be walking. The only development, I think, that we have some work to do yet, is Penn's mettle, and Dr. Mirabella, I talked to him last week, he was kind enough to put an application in the state, we'll be looking at. Hopefully, we'll get some people from Penn, or the state to come in and do a blockers audit. That's the, that's the only development that some people may feel a little resentful about, but our call at this point is, we still think kids are crossing too dangerous roads, maybe a little too much. But nonetheless, we brought in the cavalry, and we'll take along our look at that. It's Wednesday night, Dr. Moore, Mr. Blancy, and Dr. Mirabella are going to have a session for parents of grade 1 and 2. I've only received one comment from one parent of grade 1 and 2, so we look forward to an interesting dialogue with those folks. So, I'm happy, want to thank the press for getting the information out, and our new budget line works quite well. Happy the new modern technology allows to make those calls, so that parents can make changes to the schedule again. Our commitment has been working with parents, and you, the Board of Education, and the township, to really develop a team framework for making sure our kids are safe. Along the world lane, as I mentioned, I said, for national report, a lot, two years ago, we opened the school, we had to come back to and ask for additional staff. I think we're reaching that point this year, where our recommendations really are going to be adding up the first grade teacher. Our numbers are 31, 32, just to get each one of those sections, as our humble opinion is, they really did the ball last year. And we think that it's in the kids' best interest to break those grades up a little bit. Class sizes will still be decent, 23, 24 in class, but I think that's something that we feel strongly we want to do. So in the past, we've done that, we'll know that person, we put that in the agenda item, and it's not mentioned in it. So Mr. Serdulov and I will go to work in, and not make kids suffer, and so we'll look at making sure we have the adjustments in the budget to accommodate additional staff. That being said, we are watching very closely some developments in Shoemaker and Mahanjee, as I talked about, this is the budget process. I think we're okay, but along the borderline. But the good news is, our special ed population is not increasing. I mean, I talked to this, Dr. McCarrick, excuse me, she's Dr. McCarrick, I tried to make that announcement, but McCarrick is now Dr. McCarrick. Congratulations to Lynda. But one of the things that always concerns us, special ed enrollment in classes, in special ed, and especially so this year because we are going to be audited, one of the first things to look at is class roster. So we'll be carefully monitoring Shoemaker, Mahanjee, and special ed. In concert with what Mr. O'Nan was talking about, Ann Flan from, excuse me, Ann Flan from National School Boards Association will be here August 23rd to work on our plan for our national visitation in April 28th, 29th, 30th, was it 29th, 30th, three days in April, of April, that they'll be here. And we're excited to have Ann here, her district, 2030, as we complete our preliminary plans for housing, where people are going to stay, and basic flow after three days. But as I said before, Sunday night, we have the reception, whatever, home town, school boards, that's not our choice, school boards will, will contract with a local help. And then people have reception, they get an orientation from National School Boards Association, last, whoever was the president that time, myself, and welcoming comments for visitors, we believe it'll be 75 to 150 people coming here. And then the Monday, we'll be, people get the buses, they go to school, to school visiting classrooms. And then Tuesday, we'll be workshops, and then people will head home. We are also angling to have a reception program that Monday evening with the Denshi Science Center, look for, look for community contributions to pay for that own district funding uses. Okay. Also, we remind everyone that, again, summer's going by so quickly. Our first due date is August 27th. I think we're in good shape. Mr. Blancy, Mr. Ritter are working with the principals to make sure our buildings all order. The only thing we want to buy in practice, that we do have, so new procedures for cafeteria. However, everything is effective from last year. I'm talking in terms of prepay, the lunches, it's just a different vendor, everything's the same, all your accounts are carried forward, and we'll have some information online providing that. But we believe that that shift is going to be totally transparent, parents. Have any questions? One of the things that is circulating around, I do want to remind the board, the new EITC tax credit program, better known as the vouchers. Today, we received our first phone call, and had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Ballard earlier today, go back and looked at the rules regarding this. We would have to opt in to do that, and we would have, the deadline is August 15th, and we must fill out a form. But my recommendation is, at this point, the program is too new, and I think we should take a pass on that. The other thing that concerns me, and I'm going to be really late and honest to tell you, is enrollment. Our class sizes in the elementary, as I just mentioned, are very high, and our middle school class sizes are very high, and I think it would be very taxing to ask our staff to take students from another district. Not that I'm spiritually opposed to that, it's just that I don't think we have the room. And then the third thing is, right now, and no offense to Allentown, that's where the students possibly writing, I guess, or even Guffel. I'm not so sure about writing to Guffel, but the Allentown pupil cost is a little bit more than the match we would get in my opinion, we would be losing money actually if we took a student from, now it's a district, maybe about $200, $300 a kid, but I don't think we're in a business of losing money either. So...
Dr. Seidberg, can I just point out that we also have to make a change in board policy?
That's correct.
The current board policy is that we do not accept out of district students for any reason, tuition or otherwise. So we would have to change that policy before we could entertain anything like that.
So my recommendation is, there's going to be a second round, and I think we should just sit back and see what transpires in this process. I don't even know if the state is going to be ready. I have no clue, but we did get our first phone call today, which was interesting. The last thing I want to share with you, and I want to compliment Dr. Mirabella for all of our work. We have updated our new district crisis. Daniel, everything's up to date. Thank you very much, Dr. Mirabella, for all of our work. And we did get some state funding, producing this correctly, very good. And principals have this brand-new edition, and we're very thankful, and everything's up to date, looking pretty good. So thank you, Daniel. Mr. Ballard, that's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Seidberg around this report? On the hearing, I have some questions, these reasons.
I just had one additional comment on the personnel list. I'd like to thank Bob Connect for his many years of fine service as the head of the study of lower country school, and I, our staff, I'd like to wish you very best. school. I and our staff, we're likely pushing very much.
Thank you. Mr. Stolz?
By approving the report, the superintendent, are we, are we in fact approving your plan as far as across the state?
We don't approve the board's agenda this report.
As far as the budget?
There is no motion I like number one.
Then that brings up sort of my next question. By what authority does Dr. Seidberg have access to my?
It's just through the budget that he can reallocate within that budgetary framework the funds that people audit.
Okay, but Mr. Ballard, Mr. Nirmeshaw, Ms. Hyde, Mr. Bonner, Ms. Fuller, all, Mr. Rhodes, all voted according to the budget to cut busing. Under what authority, and while I agree with this decision, but under what authority did Dr. Seidberg unilaterally overturn?
We did not vote explicitly to cut busing. We voted for a budget that did not include certain funds for busing. Let's have a solicitor opine on that. I think that's correct. The board approved the budget. Within that budget was a transportation line maker. It's the superintendent and the administration's job to decide how to use this place. The board never explicitly took action and said, you must bus here or you cannot bus here. So it's quite tough to him to figure out how to use team to figure out how to take that budget. No specific action was taken either way. In fact, if I recall, there was a motion that was laid on the table to explicitly do something, which that never, that had the technicality, doesn't have to be removed, whatever. No specific board action was taken except you must bus or you will not bus here. There was no unilateral action taken. I don't think any.
Yeah, and towards the end of the school year, if it turns out that the projected expenses for transportation are going to be above what it then allocate, we'll have one of those routine budget transfer motions to take money out of a different account and put it in there. As long as he doesn't exceed the total authorized expenditures of the budget, that's a routine thing that can be done by majority vote of the board or in the latter half of the year.
And as the most specific policy on busing, one way or the other, in terms of what has to be done, there's been no board direction in that area. Do you have any other comments?
I think all of the sir, if I correctly see, there's some, I may have some others that are supposed to be assumptions.
Assumptions?
I do have a question about the budget and the transportation. In that proposed version of the budget, it was six million, four point six, four, three, two. And then with the budget, I understood that those sixty thousand was coming out of the budget. And then on the final budget that was submitted, I guess they both submitted at different times to the state, the thing it was the same. So it looked to me like the busing wasn't being taken out of the budget. I just wondered how it worked or where we're getting the money from or which line is the transportation. As it was the same in the proposal, some day and then I left. They both have the same number and I thought we were taking the sixty thousand out of the budget.
I believe the situation was that the budget as proposed had accounted for the sixty thousand already being taken out. When you saw that figure, it was mentioned that it had been taken out. And Dr. Seidberg is proposing to maintain transportation services under the same amount on the budget. So the amount of the budget hasn't changed. There's been no sixty thousand added back in and only partial return of all the busing has been proposed. So there's still some savings going on at that particular time. So the total amount has not changed. He's just proposing to do it within that total amount.
Okay.
Anything else on Dr. Seidberg's report?
Yes. When, this has been brought up before, but when the middle lane school was initially voted on, the concept was designed, was designed to be a walking school, as you have said on numerous occasions. And yet, here we are, some three years later, still working on a plan to make sure that it was a safe walking school, if I take three years.
Good question. And I take some responsibility for that. The first year, if you remember correctly, we had the same trial and tribulations where we came to the conclusion that there were certain things that weren't done at the school. Sidewalks were not quite done. At that point, Mr. Blancy and I just felt, talked to some people and just felt that with the new school opening, kids were coming from all over, maybe people postponed for a year. And I did, and asked to send a letter out to all the parents of that year explaining that we postponed for a year. Quite frankly, I should have been dressed for this year before and I didn't. But now we're getting out to it. I think the situation is such that we had conversations with the township two years ago, as many as we've had this year. But I think it's, since we made that decision not to go forward, nothing really happened. But now part of the delay is that we've had more intensive conversations with the township. I think they needed, obviously needed some time to get the things that they can do because we do not work on the same fiscal schedule as you know. Their budget goes from January to December. And in talking to township manager, it was his preference and we think it's a good one, that he would like to go back and talk to his board about a new expense. And I think we wanted to show our support for Mr. Fossmann and I think that's one reason we'll be back though. But I take responsibility. Should have happened here, it's all the same.
I have, I still have concerns that we were ready to move ahead with this. I personally was not, but the board as a whole was ready to move forward on eliminating busing this year. When we really, we didn't really have the plan in place and you're going to be working to rectify that open max here and I understand that.
I like that.
We're, we're a year ago, but we're not, we're on the doorstep of a new school year and we're just now, well, you're just now reversing this decision. There was, apparently there didn't need to be any action by the board.
Well, I don't know if I agree with that entirely. We've had those conversations, I've said before, at least two specific meetings, two years ago at the township. But again, people, you know, talk about it, people don't do it. And I was just as guilty as anyone else. But say we hadn't talked about that or it was the first time we talked about that, that's not going to act for you.
Well, there's still so many details that need to be worked out. For example, the township's going to be spending money on signs. That wasn't enough. Regardless of what PennDOT made, I would ask you, always take your advice from bureaucrats when you're thinking of yourself.
Mr. Stolz, would you please identify yourself to facts issues?
I'm reading off his report here where he was discussing that it had not designated a dangerous walking area by PennDOT. But you were aware that there had already been an incident where a child was witnessed there and was hit. What do you think would have been there was an accident? What do you think would happen when a child isn't with his or her parent and they're walking a school by themselves? They're least likely to have a problem when they're with their parents. And it had already been demonstrated to be dangerous.
That never happened at the intersection. The child bolted out away from the chair and disappeared from his parents. We talked.
And it was within the area that we're discussing?
Our kids will be crossing.
I'm sorry. I do, I do get emotional about this because despite accusations that I threw up, of course, and things, I understand that. I very much care about the safety and welfare of children. I don't yet have children. I do coaches and I would expect that people who ran on the issue of being for the children, make sure that they're standing up for the children. But I, I feel like their, their safety is cutting sixty thousand dollars. So I think I'm a little emotional about that because I, I'm accused more than anyone of this word about safety.
Side.
How many other schools do we have, elementary schools where the children walk?
Two. Reagan and Jefferson.
Albertson.
Albertson, I'm sorry, three. Albertson also students walk to the high school.
Mr. Stolz, I understand a lot of times we can't make exceptions. And I look at those schools too and I see there's cars parked there constantly on the streets. That's a situation too. But putting buses there, you know, you have to look at, I think we have to be fair all around. And I think this is a fair solution. I agree with you. I wouldn't want it on my head either, something would happen to a student. But we're, do you ever travel down here on Harrison, on the school? They have crossing yards. You all stop?
I have walked from there.
Could we not engage in a conversation?
Okay, so I'm, so I think what I feel is maybe have been attacked, but the way I'm looking at it is that we are working towards a rule of thinking in a walking school. And I think that we should come together in group and support our superintendent with this because he is thinking those efforts now. He took partial blame for it. So I'm willing to really look at these things and I think it's going to be perfect by the time we get there.
Mr. Nirmeshaw?
One of the challenges we face here is we cannot dictate to another municipal body what they do or do not do, the timing in which they do it. And we certainly cannot put our own signage up on township roads, much as we might like to. It's not our property. It's not our purview. So we do have to unfortunately rely on that intergovernmental cooperation. I do remember when we had the conversations with lower country township before the school opened. We went to them. We asked them about crossing cars. They dragged their feet, they put it up, they delayed, they decided, well, maybe we don't want to deal with it. There were a number of factors that I think contributed, especially with the turmoil that was going on in the government, lowering education at the time, that prevented them from making decisions that would help enable us to make it a walking school. I think there's plenty of blame to go around. But the thing that disturbs me the most about this whole thing is the mantra, state safety for the students, safety, safety, safety. Not a single parent has ever come and advocated improved busing for the students of advanced ages. Not, not a single parent who was at the pulpit or at the lecture, sorry, I felt like I was being preached to, not a pulpit but a lecture, not a single one of them is here tonight to say, why are you making those kids in brandy wine two o'clock? So as soon as it wasn't their kids that were walking, the whole issue of student safety seems to have been taken off the table. I'm not sure, I think that was an excuse to get busing as a convenience for their families. And believe me, I understand the desire to have that convenience. I understand that completely. It is very inconvenient to have to arrange for your children, especially when you have, as we had at one time, children in elementary and middle school and high school, three different bus pickup times, three different bus drop off times. It's a hassle to deal with. It'd be a bigger hassle if we didn't have busing. So believe me, I sympathize with that. But at the same time, that safety bugaboo, if we take that to extremes, we can say, my gosh, there were shootings in suburban high schools that are very similar demographically to East Penn. We ought to search every student before they enter the building to make sure they don't have a weapon because that would ensure the safety of our students. We can go on and on and come up with any number of unreasonable measures in the name of safety. Some of the statistics that were quoted of the number of students who were injured walking to school, and they were saying, it's just a matter of time before it happens here. I can't remember the number they quoted. It was, what, forty-eight incidents in the entire Commonwealth in a year out of, how many hundreds of thousands of schoolchildren are there? It's a very, very low instance. It's a tragedy when it happens. But to say it's inevitable that it will happen here with those kinds of statistics is a misunderstanding of numbers. And to put credence in that to say, because it's happened in forty-eight cases out of a hundred thousand, that it's guaranteed to happen here in just a matter of time, that's not sensible. We need to make sure that parents are teaching their children proper safety rules when they're on the roadways. Darting out into traffic is something that was drilled into my head at a very young age. My brother had a bad habit of doing that. He suffered consequences for doing it. He once ran into the street. A neighbor across the street ran out, grabbed him and swatted him on the bottom. And he went crying back to his mom. My mom swatted him on the bottom too. But he got the message. I'm not advocating corporal punishment, but he got the message that that's a bad thing to do. As a kindergartner, I was taught how to cross the street, how to stop, look and listen. We had those discussions with our children. They've had those discussions in the schools. We cannot prevent them from making foolish and bad choices like running out, not at an intersection, into the middle of a busy road away from their parents. We can't prevent that. We can teach sound principles. We can try to do our best to educate them. But I will not feel responsible for every student in this district when they're outside of the school grounds. Bad things sometimes happen to kids. We can't be there to prevent it from happening every minute of the day. So I think that this whole safety thing, let's stop talking about that unless you really need it. And then let's see it universally, not just applicable to one isolated school.
I just want to frame one thing that I think we need to understand and it comes from a strict constructionist, legalist interpretation of things. I would like to point out that unless it's mandated by state law in the form of busing, by having dangerous routes to schools, the school district is in no way legally responsible for the safety of students on their way to school. Unless we pick them up on a bus, they're not legally required to do their safety. That is still the parent's responsibility. And trying to make it the school's responsibility in all cases is something that I find objectionable because essentially we're responsible for them when their parents transport them or get them to our school property. And at that point, we're responsible for their safety when they turn them over to us in loco directus, as the legal doctrine goes. And if we're required by state law to pick them up on a bus, then yes, we have some legal responsibility for the safety of bus transportation. But as a person who regularly walked a lot more than a mile and a half to school in a city that did not bus anybody, and as a person who's observed hundreds if not thousands of students in the boroughs of Amayes and Albertis walking to school daily for well over twenty-eight years, I would say that many of the arguments that I heard on the subject, best could be described by a term that many people don't use very often anymore, but it's called spacious. It's not spelled, it's spelled with an E. And some of these arguments are being made for legitimate concerns, I suppose, but they have no basis in fact or law. And we're going to be facing in the future some significant financial considerations such as next year's budget, when we're going to have to look at a very close interpretation of state law to see whether we can do anything but one point's, whatever the index is, one point seven percent or whatever it's going to be because of the county reassessment. We have a conflict of laws at the present time between Act One and the county reassessment law. So there's things that are going to come into play that we may have severe budget constraints. And it is entirely conceivable to me that we'll have to talk about eliminating something. And the programs that come off the top, one of them is transportation. That is something that's not required by law. And we are not required to safely transport people to school unless there's a finding by that institution. by that institution, labeled bureaucratic, but given the force of law to decide what routes are safe and which routes are not, and not. So we have to abide by the laws, everybody else should have to abide by them also. And we do everything that we're legally required to, and then some, to deal with the safety of our students. But there's only so much we can do, and there's only so much we should do, and some of this conversation is going into areas where it is neither can or should, as far as I'm concerned. Now, if there's no further commentary on Dr. Seidenberger's report, I will now adjourn on the report.
No question. I would just like to say that, of course, every child is precious. I'd be interested in hearing the new suggestions I can. We mentioned this father has some suggestions. I'd be interested in that. One and a half miles, like the little measurement in Amayes is on the Superior Diner to the Piazza Lane. So I would be able to make sure a five or six or seven-year-old walking out by themselves without a roll cut or something like that, I think. And in McCutcheon, it's on the McCutcheon Institute, all the way out to the first student bus station. That's pretty far, so I'd just have to make sure yourself, if we're getting walking up to this, and what needs to be done, right, to get safety is important.
Will we update the maps? We'll certainly send you copies, okay? I think there's just some arrows that Mr. Brown, you know, it's threshold.
And like, the ones that are going to walk, it's maybe one.
Two.
Yeah, they're crossing the street twice.
No, they're crossing the street. They're crossing the streets. They're developing, if you go to this school, turn around, it's developing, right?
Right. I think we're working on that. I don't know.
That's work site, of course.
That's, that's, but the, the, we're also sending five, or five, this old, not, we, we feel that.
Any other comments on Dr. Seidenberger's report?
In New Jersey, we had two model businesses. And on routes that were bothered, they used, they didn't sell them. And we had that, and I thought they were putting his, kind of, a lot of instances. We do a lot of makers, it's not a bad one.
Is there any objection to moving item two with the addendum, item three, four, and five together, two, three, four, and five with the addendum two? Not appearing, can I have a motion in effect, please?
Second.
Is there any discussion on any of the items two through five? Not appearing. Dispersal, will you call a roll, please?
Ms. Hye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, excuse me. I'm sorry, we do, thank you, Dr. Stone, we have a flaw under the diet, item, excuse me, all this thing. Withdrawing Danielle Zamorski, I'm sorry.
Do the makers of the motion to the second degree of addendum? Okay, so we're voting on two, items two through five with the addendum as amended, number two, Dr. Seidenberger. All those, uh, dispersal, will you call a roll, please?
Ms. Hye.
Aye.
Mr. Stone. Mr. Urshaw.
Aye.
Ms. Donchev.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Bobbott.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Ms. We have a new person to introduce, Dr. Seidenberger.
Matthew, we'd like to introduce Matthew Gill. He's selected as assistant principal of Amayes High School. Matthew comes from the Warwick School District, Langston County. So welcome aboard, Matthew, glad to have you.
The position as we come around, shake our hands.
If I may, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity, looking forward to serving East Penn, and, you know, obviously great reputation, and I'm really excited about it, so thank you.
Also, Mr. Ballard, I'd like to introduce Todd Breiter, who's going to be filling in for some administrative duties at Amayes High School for the first semester. Todd is currently a health and phys ed teacher at Amayes High School. Todd, thank you very much.
I'd also like to thank you all, and just say I'm very excited to fill in, and anybody else.
Thank you, Speller. All right, we have item 8.1, can I have a motion on that, please? Is there commentary on this item? I had a couple of questions that I sent in earlier regarding the agreement, and the solicitor reviewed it, I was told the solicitor had reviewed it. I also asked about the fact that there did not seem to be the standard clause that either party could cancel the agreement with a certain notice of the other party. Is it inherent, it didn't seem to be there was any way to out of it, or should we?
I know it's not. I mean, for years, the district has been using the church property, and this was required in township, the church to expand, and so, in, which they also had to use. So, it's not, it's not anywhere that the last part of the year had.
Well, I mean, Mr. You had a time for special opinion of the agreement, so I appreciate that. Okay? Are there any other questions about the agreement? Appearing, dispersal, will you call a roll, please?
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Ms. Donchev.
Aye.
Mr. Urshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Bobbott.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Stone.
Aye.
Ms. Hye.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Okay, legislative, the first item we have to deal with tonight is a requirement of our PSBA membership that we send voting delegates, excuse me, to the PSBA Legislative Policy Council on Thursday, October 20th. Unfortunately, they also require that we send them the names of who we're going to be sending there by August 31st. So I would like to firm up and get the board to approve the voting delegates tonight if possible. I have had two persons quasi-volunteer, Ms. Fuller and Mr. Urshaw, but if somebody is burningly desperate to go to this Legislative Policy Council meeting and vote on the PSBA policies for the upcoming year, it is now speak now or forever hold for peace, because I would like to put a motion forward to approve voting delegates, so we can have taken care of by the PSBA. Does anybody have any objection to that?
On October 20th, it's Saturday, how is it Thursday?
Well, it is a Thursday.
Okay, it's a date. I'm sorry, how?
It is a Thursday. I will be going as a delegate, so I would like to make the motion then that we approve myself, Mr. Urshaw, and Ms. Fuller as delegates to the Legislative Policy Council. Can I have a second, please? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Dispersal, will you notify PSBA of our three voting delegates? The legislature's in adjournment for the elections. That's good news and bad news. The only thing that seems to be occurring right at the moment is, is that there are some committee meetings starting up on the various property tax elimination proposals that have been put forth in the legislature. There are at least two competing plans, and who knows by the time that this special committee gets done, there could be a third. But we need to pay attention to the details of what's coming out on those plans. Remember the devils in the details, and especially the details when the state is going to collect money and disperse it to the school districts. How they are going to do this in a manner that preserves, in some instances, some of the school districts' revenue is going to be interesting, because you realize that in the state of Pennsylvania, between $8,000 and $20,000 per student is being spent in the state, depending on where you are in the state. And now the state's going to take in money and then supposedly send it back to the school districts to buy what formula, and that will be the true kicker. I mean, we're all, I think, in favor of getting a better mix of taxes for the support of schools and not being so dependent on the property tax. But remember that when you hold the purse strings, it's the key who has the golden rules. So if you're looking for local control, and you're going to have all of the money now dispersed, because all of the revenue now comes in from income tax and sale or and/or sales tax, guess who's going to be in control of everything? So there's a question there. So it's a question of how the local revenue will be made up, what local revenue sources will be still available, whether or not there will be provisions for districts to opt into programs that the state doesn't fund elsewhere. There's all kinds of things there that, and increased types of referendum, referendum. There's also proposals out there to eliminate the concept of electoral debt, which is a big thing when you're talking about building, construction. They've had a couple of referendum in other states recently about this kind of thing, where it's a proposal like, let me back up. Right now, the referendum that we have for Act One, which is the property tax initiative, is for raising the property tax value to collect more revenue for the operation of the school and possibly use for construction debt, if you so choose, right? But there's still on the books another form called electoral debt, that comes under a different provision of the law, that would allow you to go out for a referendum to ask the voters to approve a building project or some other project like that, that's called electoral debt. And right now, they have separate rules, especially Act One does not permit the school district to spend any public funds to advocate for or against the referendum, which means the one person who has to be a stake in this has no way to put out any message other than the facts, quote unquote, about the referendum. Under electoral debt, there's no such requirements. The school district could conduct a campaign as such to ask people to vote for this referendum. So there's all kinds of rules changes and things like that that are all inherent in these revenue policies that we've got to be very much aware of, and I ask you to be listening very carefully, and if any of you get any inclinations from your legislators that something's happening, please let us know, because it's a very important, very important thing going on. So that's about it. We may see some other proposals about vouchers and other things come up in the session after the election, but that's all problematical right now, because nobody knows how the chips are going to fall. Mr. Stone?
Hi, yeah. Side, my employer, get over to us for a regular basis. What I'm hearing starts property taxes, is that is more than likely going to take place here, but I'd rather keep that on. I've also, since it brought my attention that the speaker has scheduled several special session days, happy reflections. Have you heard that? Have you heard what dates they might be, and what, if anything, they might take up? Nope, not yet, never had. I can confirm that the dates have been scheduled, but I could not tell you what days those are or why they're scheduled. So it's something that we should all keep an eye on. If one of us hears, it's my preference, of course.
Any other questions or comments about legislative issues? Not appearing, move on to business operations. Item number one is an information item about the bid opening. Items two and three are bill list approval and disbursement of funds that have nothing to do with item number one. Is there any objection to combining the two of those? Motion to adjourn?
It's just item, that's already.
We can ask the questions, whether they're combined or not, is it, it was like if you had to abstain or something, can we invite them then? Second?
Second.
Your questions on the bill list, Mr. Stone?
I was curious about the Lower McCutcheon Association and for the purchase of supplies for $1,000.
The, I think it was an improvement to church, baseball field. We reimbursed them for, for the process that's on.
And that just, this guy, that is $14,159. Plus they had a number forty, and then a nine hundred last week, so it's like $14,000 or $15,000, almost fifteen, fifteen, seven, along with that. So where does that go? The vote, the, I mean, has a fourth of that.
That is not all just, twelve thousand dollars due to the Amayes, we have two students who are, we have those who are purchasing, there's policy on one, because they do for us, the policy update, and setting the rest of the purchase, someone else from PSBA, and the one chance to, so, so, so.
I believe that there's room here, we vote on the PSBA's continuing resolution, and if we wanted to opt out of being a PSBA member, we have to use a separate motion.
I remember we did five, we did, not so much five, but just two.
I'm sorry, I was just, had a brain freeze. We work on church, the church field every year, we partner with township with a parent group, or, and we make improvements and we split the cost. This was for, if you drive by the field, they have that big black screen, I don't know what we call that, a banner or something, so we split the cost, and we played a portion.
Any other questions on these two items? Dispersal, will you call a roll, please?
Mr. Urshaw.
Aye.
Ms. Hye.
Aye.
Mr. Stone.
Aye.
Ms. Donchev.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Bobbott.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Ms. Donchev.
Is there any new business to come before the board this evening? Not appearing, we had an executive discussion to discuss personnel and negotiations and real estate. Oh, not real estate, sorry. I'm just trying to cover all the bases. And our next board meeting will be on the Monday, the 27th. We have new tour orientation tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday. The first opening day for staff is meet from today, meet from tomorrow. And Labor Day, September 3rd, all schools and offices will be closed. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned.